I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on January 23rd, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knudsen.
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. On number four, community comments. This is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that our speakers might need. So is there anyone that would like to address us this evening? Yes. Step up to the microphone and state your name, please.
I'll write this later. My name is Dolores Slade, and a 70-year resident of Corleville. And I'm called here tonight to talk about the resolution that was passed last meeting on the 16th. I think it was Resolution Number 2024, and it was a statement in support of peace in Gaza and Israel. And for the first part, I think the resolution came up for the first time on January 16th. I watched the whole meeting, and all the comments, and the voting, and all of that. I just had, I try to see the, look at the council meetings as I can. I'm surprised to see it. I thought, oh, I'll have two, three quick statements. I thought it came up that night. It was talked about by the community. There's a large group here. There were some resolutions talked about. I think they were turned down, and it was voted on. It was all over. And us, we in the community, had no chance for input, none. Now, my reasons for I would not have done it, or not have passed it, is that, so after we read this, international affairs are not within the administrative purview of the Corleville Mayor Council. It's international. And it's not part of our, now, we are sympathetic to our public, which we certainly, I mean, how can not be, anyone be not moved by the pain in the eyes of the people that were sitting here in the audience. They were terribly disturbed. But I think, in my mind, I think we should have maybe, what do you, set aside the banishment for that night, and thought about it over the week, maybe have some more discussion, and brought it up at the next meeting, to give the public, me, a chance to come down here and talk, and say, well, this, that, or the other. Anyhow, the other thing I want to say is that my niece has a, her fiancee lives in Ukraine, he's a Ukrainian citizen, and he tells us about the horrors that are happening to that country. His family is short on food, water, medicine, electricity, and the fear of bombing every night. Now, I would only say, from my standpoint, have a, are we going to have a resolution in Ukraine? The world is on fire. If you're going to do something, something broader, something just more inclusive, I don't know that I would have supported that either, but that to all the peoples that are hurting. My family is hurting terribly. And there's many people in Corleville who have Africa, they're hurting. So, and that's pretty much what I wanted to say about this, but it was a timing issue that nobody knew about it, and there are many people in the world that are affected by this, and it should have been broader. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker. Step up to the microphone and state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Rex Branstadter, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the actions that you took a couple of weeks ago on the world peace type thing, and I'm out here to say that I'm against world peace. I'm not, for God's sakes, but no one here in this room is, as far as I can tell. I'm here to address, in my own opinions, my own background, my own choice of words here, is that you're in, weigh in over where you need to be. I want to speak directly to the mayor. I want to speak to the three council members who made the decision that the city council needs to weigh in and vote for world peace. This is not your job. The mayor had the city staff, at the taxpayers' expense, draft a resolution for world peace, and only the city council got to review it and talk about it, not the citizens of Corleville. Mr. Peterson was out of town. Mr. Vogel Zhang voted against that. He didn't vote against world peace. He voted against what you folks did that night. This is out of your ballgame here. I will state that most likely nobody in the history of Corleville, not one voter who's ever voted to send anyone to City Hall for election, has hoped that the council member would take a stance and vote on world peace, ever. How about save the whales? How about the oppressed kids in Argentina? How about we save the Great Barrier Reef? All those things we could do are all worthy of our time, but not in Corleville City Hall building. Now, you folks are being paid by the citizens of Corleville to spend your time in this building on Corleville business. Do whatever you want on your own time, but not on our dime for any persuasion, any social thing you want to, not at the expense and at the time and place of the city of Corleville. You were sent here to be represent the citizens of Corleville on Corleville matters. We're going to talk about that for a minute. I'm disappointed in each of you who did not stand up and show the fortitude that maybe this doesn't belong in this room, because I don't think it does. And remember, these are my opinions. However, I don't think it would take me long to bring a lot more people down here, at all. I'm willing to do that. I'm happy to do that, and I probably will do. I don't think you were elected to worry about in this building world peace. I think you were elected to worry about and orchestrate, facilitate, and work with our police and our fire departments, our recreation departments, the library, the bus transportation, streets, sewer and water. Some are exciting and some are mundane. That's what small town, that's what Chicago city councils worry about, too. Same thing, right here on our own level. This is the house of the citizens, of taxpayers, of city of Corleville. So I want you to support your personal issues somewhere else, not here. Go right outside in the parking lot, go anywhere you want, not here. This is Corleville business in here. And I have talked to almost, almost all of you, sitting up there, about this same thing. I want you to leave your politics, your social things, outside the building, and when you come in here, let's talk Corleville things. That's who was paying, owns this building and paying your salary. And by the way, you're not the UN. You are the city of Corleville City Council, and I think you have a lot of work you can do on our own matters. So thank you so much for the time this evening.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address us this evening? Okay, we will move on to item number five, hate crimes ordinance. This ordinance will allow for hate crime enhancements pursuant to city ordinance. This ordinance mirrors others that are passed in other communities, except like all Corleville ordinance, it does not mandate jail sentences for prosecution of simple misdemeanor offenses. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance Number 2024-1001, an ordinance amending Chapter 41 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Corleville regarding violation of individual rights, hate crimes. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Any final questions or thoughts on this one? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Number six, Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Construction. The Clear Creek Stream Bank Construction project includes improvements of Reaches 1 and 3 and Becky's Creek regions of Clear Creek. And we will start this item with a bid report from our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder about what the Clear Creek Stream Bank mitigation project is. This is a mechanism made possible by the federal government through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which allows the city to make stream improvements in what is called a stream bank mitigation project. And what we're doing here tonight is we have bid the construction of the Clear Creek Stream Bank project. Bid report was included in your packet. We did have six bidders, and those bids ranged from a top bid of $6,195,617.25 down to the lowest bid at $2,553,469.25. So a big range there on this project. We were looking at the engineer's estimate, if the soil was completely hauled away by the contractor, to be in that estimate of $4,790,016. And if the city stores soil near the construction site, down to $4,277,700. Our lowest bid was to Peterson Contractors, Inc., with a price, as I said earlier, $2,553,469.25, and staff does recommend award to Peterson Contractors. Just a reminder of where this is located at. This work would happen between, in the northeast quadrant of the I-80, 380 interchange. That's where this will, will start with Phase 1. The stream will change significantly in that area. There will, there's a lot of trees, silver maples, willows, swamps, you know, things that are, that have fallen into the creek, that cause flooding problems, that have caused erosion problems, and cause this creek to be less healthy than it could be. This project will pull those trees out. They will take out other trees that are in our mitigation area, peel those back into riparian banks, plant long grasses, and put back hardwood trees. We want the community to know this is significantly going to change how the Clear Creek, how Clear Creek looks, but environmentally for the better in all of this area. The second area is Becky's Creek, and that is at the Creek Side Ballpark, and the old Charles Gay Farm site, where our flow trail currently is. Nothing will be disturbed there. It's just us making improvements on Becky's Creek. And the third phase included in this is about where Altmeier Family Park is, going on to the east to approximately where Coral Ridge Avenue would go south, if it could continue to go south. So those are the areas we're talking about. This project is funded from proceeds gained by stream credit sales. When we had our banking instrument signed and was allowed to go forward with the construction bidding, we were able to sell the first 15% of our credits, and that was a total of 11,284 credits. And those credits, I'm happy to report, are now under contract completely, and should have a contract to close with the city council here in, at our next meeting, at one of our meetings in February. So we're excited about getting that first 15% out, signed off on. So again, low bidder, Peterson Contractors, $2,553,469.25, and this project, if approved, should start here in February.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, so could I have the first resolution, please?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Construction. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Any questions or comments?
You said the total cost is 3.8. Their bid was 2.5.
So you've, are you asking where the difference is?
Yeah.
Okay. So you've got to also consider, you've also got to consider that we're holding, up in that first paragraph of my memo, you've got a final seed implant material of approximately, right now, we're holding $325,000. That will be bid later this spring. You've got a 10% contingency on contract, and you've got $647,000 worth of construction administration. So that's, so you always have to keep track of those other costs besides just what's in front of you as far as a construction bid, and we want to make sure that we do that.
So you summarize this here in the memo, or not?
I did. At the bottom of the first paragraph.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Numbers, or number C, could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for Clear Creek Stream Bank Mitigation Bank Construction. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right. Roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number seven, groundwater sustainability modeling. This proposal will create a locally scaled models for both the Cerulean and Jordan Aquifers to guide future strategies to expand the total water source capacity in the city of Corleville. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a proposal with Innovative Groundwater Solutions LLC for groundwater sustainability, modeling for the Solarian and Jordan Aquifers. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number eight, wastewater treatment facility roof replacement projects. This proposal will replace roofs on the sludge building and SBR building at the wastewater treatment plant. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding the contract for the wastewater treatment facility roof replacement project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number nine, Kempf Lift Station abandonment. The
sanitary sewer lines served by the lift station have been hooked up to a new gravitational sewer line, so the lift station can be abandoned. And there will be a public hearing on this item on February 13th, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan, specifications, estimate of costs, and form a contract for the Kempf Lift Station abandonment. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. This amendment is required to use TIF to pay for the Fifth Street improvements from 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. The consultation will be held on February 12th, and the public hearing will be on February 27th. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on the proposed amendment number 11 to the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the 12th Avenue urban renewal area. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions or comments or discussion?
Mayor, I should just mention at the previous one that both of these items, number nine and 10, the Kempf Lift Station abandonment and the West Land Use Central Truck Sewer Phase 2, are both on our capital improvement plan and have been for some time. And so this is making another step towards getting those improvements completed.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. This amendment is required to use TIF to pay for the Fifth Street improvements from 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. The consultation will be held on February 12th, and the public hearing will be on February 27th. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on the proposed amendment number 11 to the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the 12th Avenue urban renewal area. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I just report, we should have done this earlier in this process, and it's my fault that we, I forgot that you, under the new urban renewal law, you have to be very specific about each project. Previously, we could list streets in our plan, and that was enough. And now you have to list each project individually, along with the estimate of cost. And so we will be able to get this done before we get through that process. But normally, we would try to do this much earlier.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, Highway 6 Urban Revitalization Plan. This is the first step in the process to allow for tax abatement for a development on two parcels directly west of the Lowes, Home Center on Highway 6. This public hearing will be on February 27th, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the Highway 6 Urban Revitalization Plan. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, Crossing Ridge Drive. This will accept the public improvements for Crossing Ridge Drive, excluding an escrow for seating and erosion control. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting Crossing Ridge Drive improvements as completed. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 15, City Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to remind everybody of all the different things that you can do this coming weekend. On this coming weekend in Corleville, you can go Friday night to the U of I gymnastics meet. On Saturday, you can go to Burr Fest at the Hyatt Regency in Corleville. You can go to the Winter Waterfights here in Corleville, across at S.T. Morrison Park, and see our Corleville Fire Department organizing for people will come from three to four different states to participate in that. Saturday night is the NLE Chappa Concert at Extreme Arena. And then the following Saturday, you can participate in the Yeti Pedal, which is an opportunity to try out our trails here in Corleville. There will be lots of exhibits. There will be fire there and treats, and bike shops will have bikes here for people to use to try them out on our trail. So there's just a lot of fun things over the next couple of weekends that you can go. Several of these things are absolutely free for people to participate in, and so I'd encourage people to come out and take advantage of that. The other thing was today, Mayor, that we, several staff members and our architects got a chance to visit three different recreation facilities in our immediate area to start continuing the process of looking at what kind of facilities and what kind of new facilities we could have in our own recreation center here in Corleville. Just want to remind people that we are looking at that, that there's a planning process going on, and there's several opportunities coming up for people to participate in and pass on their thoughts and comments on that as well. And so just encourage people to, please pay attention. I think there's a lot of opportunities, as we saw today, for a wide variety of things that we could include in our recreation center. It isn't all just about sports. There are all kinds of other activities that are held in these facilities. And so just want to remind people that that's out there, and that encourage them to take an opportunity to do that. And if you see a facility, or see something in a facility that you're like, wow, this is something that I'd like to see in Corleville, please pass that on to the council, the mayor, the staff at Park and Rec. We'd love to hear that, because now's the time to dream and see what we can accomplish all as a group. So I just want to put that out there for people to start thinking about.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for that. That sounds like a really, really exciting one.
When do the fire, the water ball fight start?
The women will start fighting, and the men will follow right after that, usually about noon. And they'll go based on how many teams.
Thank you. And I think, Chief, you said this will be our 47th year?
I believe it's the 47th. I still haven't checked on that. I'm not sure about that COVID year, how our count is right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I don't really have anything this evening. I just wanted to say thank you to our city staff for all of your hard work on the budget process. As I, we had our work session prior to this regular meeting, and I just want to go on record again as saying that we have some of the best people on our staff in the, in the state of Iowa, I think. And part of the reason this community is growing and thriving is because of the strength of the folks that we have doing the work, doing the things that, you know, the city needs to work and function every single day. So thank you to all of our staff. And I did want to also just say thank you for all of the extra work that I know a lot of you are doing right now with all of the snow removal, the weather situation. You know, it affects almost all of our departments in some way, shape, or form, whether it's the library and rec center, looking after kids when school is canceled, whether it's our streets department and all of their hard work, whether it's our police department, our fire department, that are helping people that are in the ditch or that are stuck or having car trouble. We really appreciate all of your hard work. So thank you for that. And that is all I have. City Attorney's Report?
Nothing to report. I just wanted to report that Don popped his head in the office last week, so hopefully he's on the amend, and I'm sure he says hi. He's probably watching you anyways right now, anyway, so.
Committee and council members report. Let's start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
I want to say hi to Don Deal. We miss his little treat at the end of our meetings.
Yeah, I haven't picked that up yet, have I?
Yeah. The library board, or friends of the library, will have their book sale the first weekend in February, so check that out at the library. And I just want to thank our Corleville citizens for coming and speaking to us today. They educated me, and I feel spanked, and I look forward to more conversations like that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Peterson.
Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for not being able to attend last week. I tried to schedule my work travel around the meetings, and unfortunately, weather changed our meeting, so I wasn't able to attend. So I apologize for that. I wasn't intending on missing anything. Second, I'd like to talk a little bit about the all-in-one meeting that we had with the county and the other cities yesterday. I took away a lot from that. There was three very good programs that they spoke about, one being gun violence intervention, one being a transportation initiative for the county, and the other one being 988, which is a suicide hotline. But what I took away from that meeting was, we live in a beautiful county that But what I took away from that meeting was, we live in a beautiful county that offers these great services for our citizens, and, you know, those three issues really coincide with each other. You know, if you can't get a job, you don't have transportation. It may cause some mental issues, and who knows where they may lead. So I commend everybody that's involved in that, our law enforcement, the county, Jess Ling has done a great job and helped her with a few different things through that program. And finally, one last thing on a good up and out is, don't forget, with the weather warming up and there's 30 inches of snow out there in your yard, to check your septic pump to make sure it's running. And I'm talking from experience, because the cord had hooked around the plunger on mine, and it created an issue. So just remember, there's water that could be coming in your basement, and something so simple as a cord, like stopping your plunger, could cause a lot of damage in your basement, so check that, and thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
I have nothing to report to me.
All right. We'll go down here to Councilmember Vogelzang.
I want to echo what Roy said. Water does seek its lowest level, which is usually the basement. The basement is a hole in the ground, and so, yeah. Do a walk around, if you can, walk around your house. But, yeah, do some maintenance. The other thing is also just to double-check your discharge hose on your sump pump, because if that freezes up, that's, the water's going to be back. Your sump pump might be working, but if the discharge hose is frozen, you're still going to get water in the basement, so...
All right.
That's all.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Knutson?
Well, I'll just comment on that, Madam Mayor. As somebody who just had pipe burst and water in the basement last week, I'll echo what they just said. Ours was a little different problem than a sump pump problem, but turning off water when it gets super cold, I know it's not right now, but is probably a good idea if you're going to be out of the house for a while. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Winn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.